Good. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, everyone. Commissioners, we do need to amend this morning's agenda to include the fire restriction. If you recall last meeting, we extended that restriction through, I believe, the end of today, maybe even tomorrow, and we were going to revisit it at this meeting. We forgot to get that on the agenda. So we will add that under Tab C, item number nine, to take that up for either extension or removal at that time. So if there's not any questions on that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. You have a quorum present this morning with all five commissioners in attendance. And the first item under Tab A this morning, we've got a couple of public hearings from the Planning and Zoning Department, first being Resolution twenty-five oh nine Z oh oh one, a variance permit application from Section four point B of the two thousand and fifteen Sweetwater County zoning resolution as requested by Cameron Ming with Trans West Express LLC for a construction permit expiration date extension greater than twenty-four months. Joining us this morning is P and Z Planner Cassidy Brown. Good morning, Cassidy.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as, as you stated, this morning, our first hearing here is for just a construction permit extension for the expiration date. The applicant is no longer Cameron Ming, but still Trans West Express, so just putting that there. And our applicant is here today as well. So basically, what, what we've got going on is that Trans West Express is, they've already gotten an approved per construction permit from our, the land use department. The issue is that we can only issue permits that are valid for eighteen months. And this project is quite large, and they'll need much more time to actually get that finished. And so we're just looking to where they don't have to go through the application process again, and hoping that they can have more time to complete the project. So they are expecting that the project will take at least forty-eight months just because of the size and complexity of the project. And they're expecting to start their construction in two thousand and twenty-six in Sweetwater County. So here I do have an image that shows basically the route that this project is going to take. And you can see the piece that goes through Sweetwater County. I'll kind of zoom in a little bit there, and we see the zoning as well. So the zoning of the area is agricultural and mineral development, but largely ag zoning for the most part. And that's why I don't have specific individual land information listed out. I do have the legal descriptions for each parcel that's going to be impacted on the resolution for you all today. So our first review criteria that we look at for a variance is that there are special circumstances or conditions for fully described in the commission and board's findings, which are peculiar to the land or building, which for the variance is sought or, and do not generally apply to the land or buildings in the neighborhood, and have not resulted from any act of the applicant subsequent to the adoption of the zoning resolution. This project, again, it's quite long, around seven hundred and thirty-two miles of a high voltage transmission line. And so they're going to need a much longer timeframe than a smaller project would, the ones that we typically, you know, deal with. And so that, that expiration date extension will be necessary for them. They're also working with several other state and federal agencies such as Bureau of Land Management, U.S. Forest Service, Bureau of Reclamation. And so going through all those processes and also working with the county, they do have, you know, different timeframes that they need to meet, and they're also looking to make sure that they're minimally invasive and have like minimal impacts with different wildlife and things like that. So we know that we have such a short construction season here in Sweetwater County, and also if you're also looking at making sure that you're not impacting wildlife too much, then, you know, that also shortens the, the time that they have to actually build and work on the project. Our second criteria is that for reasons fully set forth in the commission's and board's findings, the circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of the Sweetwater County zoning resolution would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land or building. And the granting of the adjustment is necessary, or the reasonable use thereof, and the adjustment as granted is the minimum adjustment that will accomplish this purpose. So this really is, you know, the minimum amount of time that they will need to work on the project, especially, you know, considering all of the things that I previously mentioned there. And, you know, if the permit expires in the middle of the Trans West project, construction could be halted, and then that would deprive them of, you know, all the work that they've already put in, if they have to take time and, and do the application process with the county again. Third, the granting of the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning resolution, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. And Trans West has already received its construction permit from the land use department. Simply, we're just looking to extend the expiration date on the construction permit, and so we don't find that it would be detrimental to the public welfare to extend out that expiration date on their permit. We received one agency comment from Melissa Labor with BRS Engineering. She stated that the properties have no AML concerns with regard to abandoned historic mines. And at the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the PNC Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of Resolution twenty-five oh nine Z oh oh one for an extension of the expiration date of the approved construction permit for the Trans West Express Transmission Line Project for an expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand and thirty, as requested by the applicant. And that is all I have for this one, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Cassidy. Appreciate that. Questions for the resolution and the variance permit application, commissioners? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Smith. I'm the Director of Preconstruction Compliance for Trans West Express and here to take your questions.
Very good.
Discuss.
Any questions for the applicant? It's like you're getting off easy today.
Yeah.
Well, with that, we do need to open this up to a public hearing. So at this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to this particular variance permit application, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution twenty-five dash zero nine dash Z O dash zero one for approval of a construction permit expiration date extension from Section four B of the two thousand and fifteen zoning resolution requested by Cameron Ming, Trans West Express LLC.
Do you have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five oh nine Z oh oh one by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Toman.
I do have a question. Sorry, I didn't catch it early. This is a green energy only quarter, right? Do you know that? I'm pretty sure it is. Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, all of the above.
Thank you.
When's your anticipated construction start date? Could you come to the podium, please, just because there's people watching?
We have already started construction in Carbon County, in Moffett County, Colorado, in Wasatch County, Utah, and Millard, Millard County, Utah, as well. And for the past two years, well, we're addressing the construction in the very constrained zones where we have a very narrow window due to wildlife restrictions or high altitude. That makes it difficult to get in, and in some cases, we only have fifteen days to do construction due to wildlife except restrictions. And this project's been designed to not burden agencies with exception requests, you know, where you can, hey, we're here in November fifteenth, can we get a two-week extension to extend our construction period, even though that's when the big game season starts? So we're trying to do everything within the construction limitations that we have imposed on us by federal, state, even local agencies, so that we don't burden them more with paperwork and asking for exceptions to those stipulations.
Good.
And we started construction in two thousand and twenty-three in Carbon County, twenty, or two thousand and twenty-four, I'm sorry, and two thousand and twenty-five in those counties I just listed. And we'll be doing the similar next, the same next year, just, you know, portions. And then in two thousand and twenty-seven, we hope to start from, start to finish.
Saving the best for last, another one.
Yeah.
All right. We'll take it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Not, we do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number two under the public hearings this morning is Resolution twenty-five dash zero nine dash Z O dash zero two, a variance permit application from Section five B of the Sweetwater County zoning regulations as requested by the Sweetwater County Land Use Department for a commercial zoning district of three and a half acres. And we'll hand it back to Cassidy.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, this hearing and the next one go hand in hand together. This one is for variance on the minimum district size. And we need the variance on the, on the minimum district size because we're looking to change the zoning of this property to commercial zoning from agricultural zoning. The property is about three point five acres, and the minimum required district size for a commercial zone district is commercial zoning. So we're, we're really looking to do some cleanup there. Really, what's been happening is that when we looked back at the historical use of this property, it's been used for commercial uses, and we've also come across several letters and, and different things from planners over the years to applicants and property owners stating that the land was zoned for commercial use. But we're having a hard time verifying that because it is showing up as agricultural zoning. And this is the property in question here. Three point five acres right off of Interstate eighty. The new property owners, they're looking to do a food truck on this property. And so because of the historical uses of it, we would go ahead and they'll be permitted to do that just with, it'll be a non-conforming use. But we would like to clean up the zoning just so that it makes sense for the future, and so that the zoning's aligned with the way that it's been used in the past. So we did post our public notice, and then we've got view to the north, south, east, and west there, too. And that brings us to review criteria. So the first is that there are special circumstances or conditions fully described in the commission and board's findings, which are peculiar to the land or building for which the variance is sought, and do not apply generally to land or buildings in the neighborhood, and have not resulted from any act of the applicant, applicant subsequent to the adoption of the zoning resolution. Again, this property historically has been associated with a variety of uses that are aligned with the commercial zoning. It's been a hotel in the past, convenience store, adult bookstore. It's had several different uses. And we just are having a difficult time verifying with our records that it really should be zoned for agricultural use. Also, it is a fairly small parcel to be zoned for agricultural use. Second, for reasons fully set forth in the commission's and board's findings, the circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of the Sweetwater County zoning resolution would deprive the applicant, applicant of the reasonable use of the land or building. The granting of the adjustment is necessary, or the reasonable use thereof, and the adjustment as granted is the minimum adjustment that will accomplish this purpose. The, the variance is necessary in order for the proposed zone map amendment, which will come up next, to be adopted. If the variance is not approved, then the zoning will just, it'll continue to be misaligned with the current and historical use of the property. So really, just, it's about cleanup here. Third is that the granting of the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning resolution, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Staff does not anticipate that the granting of this variance will be detrimental. Again, it's just bringing the current usage and historical usage into alignment with the zoning. We received two agency comments, first from Mark Berry with Lumen, stated no conflict with this project or with this proposal. And Melissa Labor, BRS Engineering, stating that the property has no AML concerns with regard to abandoned historic mines. And at the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the PNC Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of variance request twenty-five oh nine Z oh oh two from minimum district size requirements for a commercial zone district of three point five acres as requested by land use staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Cassidy. Appreciate the explanation. Any questions on this variance permit, commissioners? Not, we do need to open this up for public hearings. So at this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to this variance permit application, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
I approve Resolution twenty-five dash zero nine dash Z O dash zero two for approval of the variance application for minimum commercial zone district size requirements from Section five B of the two thousand and fifteen resolution requested by Sweetwater County Land Use Department.
Do you have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five oh nine Z oh oh two by Commissioner Jones? Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close nay. Motion carries unanimously. That's going to bring us to our last item under the Public Hearing Section for Planning and Zoning, Resolution twenty-five dash zero nine dash Z O dash zero three, a zoning map amendment in accordance with Section twenty of the Sweetwater County zoning regulations as requested by the Sweetwater County Land Use Department for the zoning district of approximately three and a half acres, more or less, to be amended from agricultural A to commercial C. And we'll hand it back to Cassidy.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this one should go pretty quickly then, just to not repeat too many things as I stated before. Land use staff is requesting a zone map amendment from agriculture to commercial for the previously stated property. And that way, we can just bring the zoning into alignment with the use, historical and current. We've got our site photos again. And I think, let's see. So our first review criteria then for a zone map amendment is that the amendment is consistent and compatible with the current resolution and the comprehensive plan. And we do find that the amendment encourages growth and development to continue in an orderly manner, and in locations that contribute to the economic and social well-being of county residents. Second, the proposed zoning is suitable for the existing topography and creates multiple lots. Does, the third is that the proposed zoning is compatible with existing or allowable uses of adjacent properties and neighboring zoning districts. So there is one adjacent property that's also zoned for commercial use that's just across the interstate there. And then the remainder of the adjacent properties are zoned for agriculture use. For the proposed zoning can demonstrate adequate public facilities, including roads, drainage, potable water, sanitary sewer, and fleece and fire protection, exist or will exist to serve the requested use at the time. Staff finds that this requirement is met regarding the current proposed use, but if there are any additional requirements that need to be met, then those will be addressed through the permitting process. Five, the amendment shall not adversely affect adjacent properties, communities, or the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Sweetwater County. And staff does not foresee that this amendment will have an adverse effect on adjacent properties. Six, the request conforms to all applicable provisions of this resolution. And now it does with the approval of the variance for minimum district size. Two comments, again, same as before, Mark Berry with Lumen stating no conflict, and Melissa Labor stating that there's no AML concerns. And at the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the PNC Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of zone map amendment request twenty-five oh nine Z oh oh three from agriculture to commercial as requested by land use staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Cassidy. Appreciate that. Any questions for the zoning map amendment, commissioners? If not, we need to open this up for public hearings. So at this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to this zoning map amendment, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution twenty-five dash zero nine dash Z O dash zero three for approval of a zoning map amendment from agriculture A to commercial C requested by the Sweetwater County Land Use Department.
Do you have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five oh nine Z oh oh three by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Cassidy.
All right.
Appreciate it. It's going to bring us to the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. This time, if there's any members of the public who wish to speak and address the governing body, we limit this to three minutes, and the floor is now open. Morning, Representative Brady.
Thank you. Chairman and board. I'm before you as a citizen of Sweetwater County in the sovereign state of Wyoming. I'm just responding to last week's, or last meetings question regarding a petition that I signed, and I said I would look into it. What I have found is that the initial request has a picture of a house on it. Therefore, since I run for office, it doesn't mean my forfeit my First Amendment rights. I will continue to sign whatever petition that I feel is in my best interest as a citizen of Sweetwater County in the sovereign state of Wyoming. So that is my answer to your question. Thank you.
Thanks, Representative. Anyone else who'd like to address the governing body? Not, we'll go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. Now it's going to move us right along into Tab B, which is the consent agenda. There are eight items before you this morning, commissioners, first being the approval of the September second, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes. Second being the approval of the county vouchers warrants, the EALs and the commissioners' report. Third being the approval of the monthly reports. Fourth, the approval of the abates and rebates. Fifth, the approval of the human services agreements. Sixth, the request to restaff a vacant position in the clerk's office. Seventh, a request to restaff a vacant position in the attorney's office for a legal assistant. And finally, number eight is the approval of the participation in the National Opioid Secondary Manufacturers settlement. Commissioners, at this time, I would ask if there are any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda for further consideration. And I would ask that we remove the warrant to Vaughn's Plumbing and Heating from the consent. And if there are no other requests, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close nay. Motion's unanimous. Next, I'd entertain a motion to approve the outstanding warrant, number one two eight zero seven six, to Vaughn's Plumbing and Heating, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. I'm going to abstain as that is the place in which I am employed. Moving right along into Commissioner comments. Looks like I'm buying lunch today.
It's going to be expensive.
After our last meeting, Commissioner Richards and I met with the Clearview Improvement District President Les Mok, and Les walked us through some of the kind of ongoing challenges and improvements they've been making over there in regards to trying to get some things back on track. They've had numerous maintenance issues with just faulty meters and misreadings and a variety of other things. They've got some bylaws developed. They've hired an attorney for representation. They've hired an outside auditor. And are trying to clean up some issues they've had ongoing. So Les just wanted to bring us up to speed. It sounds like he may attend a meeting in the future, but more or less just wanted to open up those lines of communication and obviously, we've had some feedback in the past, and so he wanted to kind of give his perspective on some of that, and thought it was a good meeting. Appreciate him reaching out and lots of improvements on the way with some different drainage road improvements and I think that was pretty much it. They upgraded a bunch of meters, too, but it sounds like things are going well over there and getting things back on track. So appreciate Les for reaching out. I missed the county leadership lunch this month, so I'll have to catch up with them next month, I think. Aside from that, we had the big grand opening for the airport commercial terminal last Friday, and gave a little speech at that. If you haven't been out there to check it out, it's, it's definitely worthwhile. It doesn't really feel like Rock Springs or Sweetwater County when you go out there. I said it in my speech, but I think that's a tremendous improvement for the community to be proud of. Obviously, we've had some negative feedback in regards to the need for it and the expense and everything else, but while I would argue that although forty-four million dollars is no small token, locally, that was only one point two seven five million of an investment here and pretty top notch. here, and pretty top-notch. So, hopefully that opens the door for additional opportunity in the future, and in the meantime, you know, job well done to the Airport Board and Devon for their vision and forward thinking. So, pretty special day, one that I think most of us weren't sure would ever come about, and obviously took some risky pledge by trying to, you know, back some of those grants in the case that they fell through, you know, who would fund the remaining amount of the project, and obviously, we signed up for that, and it was a little nerve-wracking at times, but even though we pledged that forward, it was never needed, and Devon found the funds to keep marching forward on that. So, great improvement and certainly a little reward for a job that doesn't seem to have much at times. So, the bigger portion of the last couple of weeks was honestly yesterday, was invited to the Idaho National Laboratory from the United States Department of Energy through their Nuclear Energy Division up there in Idaho Falls, spent all day touring the INL and could go on and on and on about it, truthfully. We went and saw the advanced test reactor, we toured the INTEC, the Idaho Nuclear Technology and Engineering Center, spent some time over at the naval reactor facility, and ended the day at the Materials and Fuels Complex, but got to see a little bit of everything. And whether you have concerns or issues or opinions about nuclear energy, not here to debate that, but I would say it was a very fascinating tour, something that I would recommend. You know, everyone, I guess, take the time, if you get that opportunity to go check it out, I do believe it's probably the way of the future, lots of interesting information that has been around for a long time. I think that plant has been there since the fifties, which is, for some reason, I thought they were more of a power plant, I obviously understood that they were research and development, but that primarily is their only objective, they are not an energy-producing facility, it's more of a testing and research center, and they do a little bit of everything there. And we went right up to one of the reactors, you know, within feet away of it, saw some of the different ways that... It's very safe, I mean, there's lots of protections that are put in place there, you know, they screen you when you come out to make sure that you're not exposed to any radioactive, you know, activity, but it's quite the process. And obviously, the ongoing issues, you know, on the national level or what to do with the, I guess, spent fuel cells and the storage of those, and so that was a bulk of the conversation and the tour in regards to, you know, the financial constraint and obligation they have to store those. But one interesting, quite a few of interesting pieces, but they handed out this packet, which is probably hard to see, but it's the size, it's a little bit bigger than a Tic Tac. And it says, "One uranium pellet in today's light water reactor has about as much energy available as three barrels of oil, one ton of coal, and seventeen thousand cubic feet of natural gas," which tells you the amount of, I guess, opportunity there. With each of the different tours and sites that we went to see, each kind of had their own touch, obviously, within the process, but one of the most fascinating I felt like was when we went over to the naval side of things and the storage that they have at their facility there, they've got, obviously, the big fuel cell rods, they put them inside this cage after they're spent, and then they seal those in a canister, and it's a long process, but these huge, I mean, incredibly thick stainless steel walls, and then they contain those inside of a concrete overpack, and each concrete overpack has three-foot-thick walls to, I guess, forbid any radiation that may or may not come about, which obviously can't come about through that. But these concrete overpacks, they're massive, they're kind of like, I don't know, I think they can fit two canisters in each one of them, kind of looks like an old water tower that you may have seen through town. And they're scattered throughout the facility, all of the ones on the naval side were stored indoors, but the amount of machinery and technology they have to pull that operation off is next level. They move them around with floor jacks, which is more or less just a pallet jack on steroids. Each of those concrete overpacks weighs three hundred and sixty thousand pounds, and then when they're fully loaded, those airlifts, I think they said will lift up to four hundred and fifty thousand pounds, and all it takes is a hundred and twenty PSI to lift them up, and they'll move them throughout the facility, load them, unload them, and, you know, transport them as needed, but they store all of that on-site, we walked right next to them, there was a row of, I think, two hundred of these overpacks inside this facility, and in the meantime, they're constructing another receiving facility presently to the small tune of three billion dollars, which is more than the state of Wyoming's entire budget, so a little bit of money involved in the nuclear business, but it was very informative, it's something that I've never pretended to be an expert in, I learned a great deal about nuclear energy and the process, and obviously, the focus was on what to do with the stored spent cells in the future, but also the different opportunity between terror power and the microreactors, and I guess the way that is likely to be some form of energy in the future, especially with the ongoing constraints and demands, you know, with all these AI data centers, and obviously, some of the struggles we see here locally too in regards to the grid and not having enough, I guess, infrastructure and power to keep up with some of the demands that are coming forth. So, very informative, I appreciate the invitation from the Department of Energy, and I could go on a lot more, but it was a good tour, good experience, late night, so dragging a little bit this morning, but encourage any of the others to take full advantage, it was a Wyoming day, so there was representatives, both from the House and Senate there, some college trustees, a couple mayors, other commissioners, the Department, the Wyoming Energy Agency, Business Council, various others, but pretty cool, pretty cool stuff. So, that is really all I have for you commissioners, and I would stand for any questions. If not, I lost my agenda. Mr. Slaughter, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the fifth, I spent the morning going through correspondence and preparing for the Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board meeting to be held on the eighth. As I was absent from the prior monthly meeting, I needed to review the minutes and actions that were taken at that meeting. I had several conversations with Joint Powers Board Administrative Assistant Allison Balzic, and we approved the materials for the Monday meeting. Later that day, I participated in the recap meeting of the congressional tour. Each of the counties gave a report on the congressional tour, comments included recaps, highlights, and recommendations for future tours. Each county reported that they felt the tour was an unqualified success. It was unanimously agreed that the area of the four counties involved created more drive time than would be considered optimal, so there was some discussion about changing potentially the counties involved the next time that we are involved. The overall highlights of the tour seemed to be the shooting exercise in Natrona County and the boating experience at Buckboard Marina, along with the Trona Mine Tour in Sweetwater County. One of the things the staffers referenced was that they would have liked to have seen more hands-on experience with oil and gas and coal operations. Overall, I think the WCCA, along with the group from Washington, really enjoyed their experience here and have a new perspective on many issues that we face here in the state of Wyoming and in the Western United States. On the eighth, I met with Land Use Director Bingham to discuss the planning and zoning issues that were presented at the PNC Board hearing on the tenth. We had a good discussion, Eric briefed me on items to be heard at that meeting, which were the things that we did previously this morning. We then had a discussion with Deputy County John DeLeon on the status of the Dry Piney Industrial Siding application. John and Eric continued to work diligently to prepare for the MOU to be signed for this project. Later that afternoon, I conducted the regular meeting of the Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board. Projects are continuing to move forward. This month, distribution was below the projections that were done prior to bonding. The distribution was one million, two hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. We have now collected twenty-six full months at an average of one million, five hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. Total collections are forty million, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty cents, or roughly fifty point six-six percent of the total to fully fund the project. We've also signed an engagement letter with MHP to do the fiscal twenty-five audit, and work has begun collecting information and signing documents to move forward with this audit. Three of our board members were reappointed to additional three-year terms, and Mayor Dominic Wolf of Superior was elected Board Treasurer. That evening, I attended the Star Transit regular monthly board meeting. Ridership continues to be significantly higher than the same period last year with seven hundred and six, or thirty-seven percent more rides in August of this year. The Wyoming Transportation Conference was held in Rock Springs and went very well. Board member Steve Shea and bookkeeper Mary Seppi each received special awards at the conference. The board was also approved for a nine thousand dollar grant from the Sweetwater County Tripartite Board. The board is also working on testimonials from riders for its website and would like to do a presentation before the Board of County Commissioners. I told them I felt November would be a good time for them to get on our agenda. On the tenth, I missed the regular meeting of the PNC Board, but as previously mentioned, I had discussed the items on the agenda with Land Use Director Bingham. The eleventh, I attended the ribbon cutting for the new meeting room at the Green River Library. The Green River Chamber sponsored the event, which was well-attended. Library Director Lindsay Travis talked about the changes that had been made and explained the benefits that will be seen by library users for many years to come. On the twelfth, I spent the morning reviewing information on a couple of issues that had arisen during the week. I was able to speak with principals to the issues that created more questions than answers. I will continue to try and help with resolution of these concerns over the next few days. That afternoon, I attended the grand opening of the Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport. Director Devon Rubaker did a great job explaining the difficulties that had delayed the construction of the new terminal and highlighted many of the new features at the airport. Governor Gordon and United States Congresswoman Hegman were in attendance, and both spoke on the project and the positive impact it will have on regional air service and the state of Wyoming. Chairman West also spoke and did a fine job representing the Board of County Commissioners. The new terminal is first-class and will serve as a gateway to Southwest Wyoming for many years. Yesterday, I spent the afternoon preparing for this meeting and once again addressing issues for the Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board. Last week also marked a great week for our area with the announcement of a comment period to rescind the public lands rule. The Department of the Interior and Secretary Burgum are seeking to restore balance in federal lands management that will help return our public lands to the multiple-use concept and empower more local decision-making. The Department of Interior also approved additional mining permits for Black Butte coal that are projected to keep them in operation through two thousand and thirty-nine. Both of these actions should bode well for Sweetwater County. And last, in my remarks last meeting, I failed to relate that in the county museum's monthly board meeting, the museum director did request additional storage space, if at all possible. I told him we were aware that they needed space and that I would mention this in my commission comments, and I failed to do so. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner, appreciate the report, and yeah, thanks for touching on Black Butte, congratulations to the future of that. It's a tremendous win, I think, for them and for Sweetwater County, and for the state, for that matter. Questions or comments for Commissioner Slaughter's report? Not, Commissioner Toman, the floor is yours.
On the third, I went out on the Big Sandy River with the BLM range staff to do their MIMs monitoring, which is checking the status of plant growth along the stream bank at designated segments to ensure health of the stream. On the fourth, I received a call from Emmy, who was on the congressional tour, from Senator Lummis's office, she was trying to follow up on the BLM Resource Management Plan process with the county, and I just, we've been playing phone tag, but I did relay to her that there's an urgent need to get a national and a state BLM director so we can move forward on some of these BLM issues. On the fifth, I attended the wedding at the ranch for my nephew Rex Wardell and his new wife Samantha, congratulations. It was a huge event with the Sundowner Band and lots of friends. On the ninth, I listened in on the Wyoming Colorado River Advisory Committee meeting. There were eighty-two people on the call, they all, they are working to finalize a pilot voluntary water conservation program. Details are being worked out so as not to jeopardize irrigators' water rights they will present to the Select Water Committee in November, and then hopefully get something approved through the legislature after the first of the year. The intent is to show the other basin states that we are doing our part to conserve water in the hopes that they will all sign an agreement, because this is much better than litigation or legislation. Fontanelle is Wyoming's largest storage on the Colorado River, and there are over three thousand diversions on the river in Wyoming, so it makes for an interesting proposal. On the eleventh, I attended the Green River Library ribbon cutting and open house for the remodel meeting room. It was well-attended, and the room looks great. On the tenth, or the twelfth, I attended the Airport Terminal ribbon cutting and open house ceremony. It is exciting to see that project finally come to fruition after eight years of work by Devon Brubaker and the Airport Board. The new holding room was designated the Devon Brubaker Holding Room for all the work he has done on the project as Airport Director, most notably saving the county and cities millions of dollars. There was only a one point two seven five million dollar local investment for this over forty-three million dollar project. Thanks to the FFA and the state for stepping up and helping with that. On the fifteenth, I attended Library Board Meeting. We met in the new meeting room at the Green River Library. At our next meeting, Lindsay Travis will present her annual report to the commissioners. They approved, reviewed, and approved the state annual audit report. Marlena Brown was introduced as their new business manager for the library, and she comes to them with extensive background working with the city of Manila, Utah. Numerous upcoming activities were announced, including a Riverside Harvest Festival in Green River on September twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. This Friday and Saturday, I shall attend the Green River High School Hall of Fame induction ceremonies as a new inductee. Special thanks to Barbara Van Meter for sponsoring me. A special shout-out to John Adams, YDOT Director, for the projects that are happening in our region. The projects in this area that have occurred over the summer are much appreciated, and they include the repavement, Wyoming Highway three seventy-two, the LeBart Road, fencing on the road three seventy-two from Fontanelle to US Highway one eighty-nine, and now they're working on the replacement of cattle guards on Wyoming Highway twenty-eight between three seventy-two and Farson, in hopes that you won't get thrown out of your vehicle when you cross those in the future. And they put new signs on the Little Sandy River east of Farson, so thank you. This Thursday, we attend CLG meeting in Lyman, and our Waco, Wyoming Association and County Elected Officials Convention is next week, September twenty-third, twenty-fifth. Thanks to Cindy and Sally for stepping up to be the workhorses. See you next week. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, appreciate the report. Questions or comments for Commissioner Toman? Not, Commissioner Richards, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning, commissioners. It's a busy couple of weeks since our last meeting, but man, it's been a tough couple of weeks. After our last meeting, I joined Chairman West for a meeting with Clearview Acres Improvement District Chairman Les Malk where he updated us on what their organization is working on. We had a very productive and informational meeting, I appreciate the work that Les and his board have done over there. On the third, I joined Chief Deputy County Attorney DeLeon and Land Use Director Bingham for the Dry Piney Industrial Siding Project MOU meeting in Pinedale hosted by Sublet County. We were able to successfully negotiate an MOU with Sublet, Lincoln, Uinta, and of course, Sweetwater County. According to our economic modeling, about thirty-seven percent of the construction workforce will likely temporarily reside in Sweetwater County during the project's construction. While the materials purchases are pretty significant for the project, putting just under fifteen million on the table, the construction workforce they're projecting just isn't that large, meaning they really aren't gonna have that big of an impact. Problem is, no matter how we looked at it, there was no way that we were going to be able to justify the amount of impact using that percentage that would bring us. So, in the MOU, I negotiated two reduced positions to reflect that. As I've mentioned previously, it is questionable whether Sublet County will qualify for any industrial siding impact funds, which necessitated the two different positions. In the first, if Sublet is funded, we agree that Sweetwater would receive ten percent of the funding, and in the second, if Sublet is not funded, we agree that Sweetwater would receive twenty percent of the funding. In reality, though, no matter how hard Eric and John try, they can't identify even that much, so our impact assistance application will likely be for under four percent of the available funds. I expect that the other applicants are gonna face the same issue, and a lot of the money will be left on the table. Basically, this project is just the opposite of the Dry Creek Project, which had a much larger workforce compared to the materials purchases, and that meant there was nowhere near enough funds made available to address the identifiable impact in that project, just the opposite here. It continues to show the weakness... It continues to show the weakness in the current statutes that govern those formulas, but that's something we've tried to address and have been unable to at the legislative level. On a brighter note, Sweetwater County received the first distribution payment this month for the Kemmer Power Station 1 project with the check coming in for just under $12,000. It's not a lot of money on scale, but it add up over the life of the project. It should be about $118,000 for this fiscal year and then continue for several years. On the 4th, I attended the enterprise meeting at the hospital where Ashley Harp Street from the Wyoming Association of Municipalities was a featured speaker. Later that day, I joined Public Works Director Legursky for a tour of the new Public Works building on Leo's Drive. All I can say is wow. One of the more difficult things that we have been faced with as a commission is the aging buildings and infrastructure that Sweetwater County uses to provide the services that our taxpayers expect, especially with likely new pressures on the revenue streams that we use to provide them. The new Public Works building represents an investment by those taxpayers that will pay off over future decades in a facility that will allow our employees to provide those services more efficiently and at a much higher level of quality. I'm looking forward to getting it opened up and us being able to offload some of our other properties. On the 5th, I attended our monthly federal partners meeting. All of the federal agencies are basically singing the same tune, which is that they are all in a hiring freeze and their seasonal employees are pretty much done for the year. Flaming Gorge Recreation Area is once again rudderless as Brian Wilson has taken a transfer, so they'll be rotating interim leaders through the office monthly until they find someone who wants to take the job more permanently. Some good news, though, as of midnight on the 5th, the Ashley National Forest rescinded their stage one fire restrictions, so hopefully we're through the worst of the fire danger. I believe the BLM's stage one restrictions are still in effect, but I expect they'll be addressing that soon. Later that day, I remotely attended a congressional tour recap with Wyoming County Commissioners Association and the participating counties of the tour. I think everyone agreed that putting four of the geographically largest counties together on one tour is something we should avoid in the future. Hopefully, when it comes around to our turn again, we can spend a little more time with them in Sweetwater County and have a little less marathon windshield time. On the 9th, I remotely attended a housing task force meeting. Basically, we agreed that while we have been pretty successful in identifying a lot of the housing problems that we face, that much like every community in the entire country, we're pretty much at a loss for how to do more than, how to do more to address workforce housing. Every practical solution requires funding, and there just isn't any out there at the scale necessary to address it. We're going to scale back meetings to quarterly so we can keep it on the radar just in case anything new comes up, but in the meantime, we're going to pivot our attention to other things. I had planned on attending the ribbon cutting for the new meeting room in the Sweetwater Cutting Library, but I just couldn't swing it. I heard it was a great event, though, and I planned to swing by soon to take a look at the new meeting room. On the 12th, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for the new Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport. I've toured the airport terminal pretty regularly since I've been a commissioner, and it's just astounding to see the changes, especially over the last year. Sweetwater County can truly be proud of what we have out there now, and it's going to be, make a fantastic first impression for countless folks who travel into trouble by air to our community. Then yesterday, along with some of you and more elected officials and other leaders from around Wyoming, I attended another tour of the Idaho National Laboratory. I think Chairman West covered it quite well, but suffice it to say, I continue to learn more every time I attend. Going forward, I'm hoping for a light calendar as we get into hunting season. On the 18th, I'll attend the Third Quarter Air Quality Advisory Board meeting. On the 23rd, I'll attend a Sweetwater County Outdoor Recreation Collaborative Steering Committee meeting. On the 24th, signatures for the Dry Piney MOU are due, but I'm sure we'll have that all wrapped up by then. Also on the 24th is a Southwest counseling meeting. Of course, all that week is also the Waco Conference hosted here in Sweetwater County, which I look forward to attending. On October 3rd will be next month's federal partners meeting, and then on the 7th, full three weeks from now, we'll be full circle back to here. In the meantime, there are a couple of things that I want to make noted before I let you go. The first is that today is National IT Professionals Day. I want to thank our IT Director, Tim Knight, and the entire IT staff for all the work they do keeping us well-connected. They do a fantastic job for us, usually behind the scenes, and I just want to let them know that it doesn't go unnoticed or unappreciated. Second, the last week in September is Banned Books Week. Each year during Banned Books Week, I bring forward a selection from my personal collection of works that have been challenged, censored, or banned at various points in history. These books, once suppressed for their ideas, language, or themes, are now recognized as some of the most important contributions to literature and culture. Their survival is a reminder that attempts to silence voices often precede their celebrations as classics. This year, I've also included the script for Citizen Kane, the landmark 1941 film that faced suppression from powerful interests, but today is preserved in the Library of Congress as one of the greatest works of American art. Like the books besided, it stands as proof that truth and creativity ultimately outlasts efforts to silence them. And that reminds me, as I said in the beginning of my comments, it's been a busy couple of weeks, pretty normal in that regard, but it's been a tough couple of weeks. There's been news in our country that has really put somber note on all the other things we deal with and other issues that we deal with here at home that put a lot of stress, not just on us as elected officials, but on our families and on our staff. You know, I saw a locally elected official attack someone else in our community in these last couple of weeks because he was wearing a lanyard that represented his alma mater. I imagine that, being so angry over what school someone was proud to attend and using that as an excuse to publicly tag them with a derogatory nickname. And then that same official straight-up attacked one of our component agency directors with a statement on social media that was so disrespectful that it made my blood boil. It was a downright disgusting comment about his intellectually on par with his ridiculous comment at one of our meetings that we should all call Elon to solve our problems with the Rock Springs RMP. As elected officials representing people who put their faith in us, when they cast their votes for us, we always have to do better. That's why after I caught some grief after our last meeting, and I was accused of being disrespectful to the Wyoming representative who spoke to us that day, I went back and watched that conversation several times. Because if I was disrespectful, then I wanted to own up to that. So I watched it, and I watched it again. And what I saw was the representative make a statement and then ask us if we had any questions. We did. And I believe after watching that interaction several times, that my questions were fair, balanced, delivered pleasantly and respectfully, and about a timely subject. And she felt she couldn't or shouldn't have to answer because she was just there as a citizen that day. We are all citizens. We're a citizen commission. Our friends on the, in the municipalities are citizen council members with citizen mayors. Our staff are citizens. Our families are citizens. Our legislature is a citizen legislature, probably the last real citizen legislature in the United States. There's a cost to that, though. I don't get to take this commissioner's pin off when I get out of this suit and tie and just be Citizen Richards whenever it suits the situation. I ran for this position because I love Sweetwater County, and I want the best for it and for the people who live here. That love and that dedication runs 24/7/365. While this is supposed to be a part-time job, it's a job that I never stop doing, when I go home, when I travel, when I'm on vacation, when I'm watching my grandson play soccer. This meeting room, this courthouse, this county, and the people in it are always on my mind. On the other hand, if I walk into a meeting room of another government body and I ask them if I have any questions for me, I'm damn well not going to tell them that this isn't the time or the place and that I don't have the answers to those tough questions. And when that happens in my meeting and the opportunity presents itself, I would be remiss in my part-time, full-time job as an elected voice of this county not to ask those tough questions. So I thought of the story of Citizen Kane was a fitting addition to my banned books collection, and you know, I should have thrown the Bible in there as well, just for good measure. Burning books is bad, and it's always bad, then give you an education that you might need later in life. Keep that in mind as we observe Banned Books Week and go visit your local library. That's all I have for you today, Mr. Chairman. The next time we see each other, it will be a whole new season, and I'm looking forward to the change. Snow can't start flying, snow can start flying any day now, and I'll be over the moon about it. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Richards's report? Not, Commissioner Jones, you're Mr. Redondo today.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the 5th, I was able to take an early flight out of our new terminal with my wife and have a short trip to Nashville to enjoy the city and a little bit of horse racing at Kentucky Downs Track. The new terminal has a few minor bugs that were working out while we were there, but overall, it's an incredible facility and I think it's safe to say a tremendous improvement to what we had in the past. I certainly believe the new facility will help draw people here as an easy and wonderful way to travel to Southwest Wyoming. I look forward to flying in and out of our airport in the future. As a little side note, our plane tickets were cheaper out of here than they were out of Salt Lake City. The following week, I had several conversations with a variety of people, including our Land Use Director Eric Bingham regarding the BLM RMP and various correspondence. I'd once again like to thank Mr. Bingham and our Chief Deputy County Prosecuting Attorney DeLeon for all of their continued hard work on this never-ending project, probably the two biggest rock stars in Sweetwater County when it comes to the RMP. We were very happy to see the Department of Interior is proposing to rescind the terrible BLM public lands rule, aligning with Secretary Burgum's commitment to restoring balance in federal land management by prioritizing multiple use access. Should remove the previous administration's treatment of conservation as no use. Secretary Burgum said, "The most effective caretakers of our federal lands are those who, whose livelihoods rely on its well-being. Overturning this rule protects our American way of life and gives our communities a voice in the land that they depend on." I could not possibly agree more with what Secretary Burgum had to say there. We've lived on and used these public lands for agriculture, access, public use, hunting, fishing, et cetera, for generations. All we hear about Sweetwater County is how wonderful our land is. It's a crown jewel. It's prized fisheries, incredible hunting, amazing vistas. Subscriptions go on and on. Obviously, what we're doing here is working and working very well, so I think we should be allowed to continue our successes. Our wildlife is healthy. Our grouse numbers have increased by leaps and bounds. I believe we heard about 30% as a number. Fishing is tremendous. People from near and far come to camp and recreate, so let us do what we do best and let us manage our lands. On the 11th, I attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Monthly Board Meeting. As usual, a variety of topics recovered. CEO Irene Richardson gave a detailed report on where the hospital sits with their strategic plan results. Just a few highlights that Irene reviewed in her long list of topics were patient experience, which had an overall rating of 85.7%, which exceeded their goal; environmental and cleanliness, which exceeded their goal; patient results, which surpassed their goal; employee experience exceeded their goal; sepsis, which far exceeded their goal; a Google star rating of 2.3 goal, which came in at 4.7; and financial goals that have far exceeded their goals. There are many other topics covered, but this gives you an overall feel for the success achieved by everyone at MHSC. All in all, the hospital has become an organization we can all be proud of and trust for all of our healthcare needs. I think it's been that way for a lot of years, but the growth and the expansion and the improvements that we're seeing up there are second to none. On the 12th, along with all of you, I also attended the ribbon cutting for the new airport terminal. I want to make sure to give credit to Devin Brubaker for all of his hard work, and maybe most importantly, his perseverance. This project faced every delay and difficulty any of us could imagine, probably some we never even dreamt up, but we're finally at the finish line. I encourage everyone to at least take a drive out and tour the terminal. Also, look at flying in and out of our incredible facility. As I mentioned, my wife and I flew out and then into our airport. We couldn't have been more happy with the experience, and so strongly encourage everyone to use our airport. Sunday, the 14th, went to the Idaho Falls, the INL, as has been mentioned, and very well covered. It was a very long day, starting at about 7:00 and ending at about 11:00 last night, so 7:00 AM that is. Just a few of the things that I take away from it. I didn't really know what to expect going into this, other than I kind of expected there would be a fair amount of fluff and only showing the highlights, the good points, not really uncovering anything, digging into details. Very kind of superficial, I think, was what I expected, and that's not a negative comment towards the INL. That's just was my feeling going into it. I couldn't have possibly been more wrong. They were completely open, detailed, didn't hide anything, that's for sure, because we toured probably not everything. It would take more than one day to tour everything, but when you go to this facility, if anybody gets the opportunity, I suggest you do, but when you go to this facility and you stand literally closer than from us to that wall, to a nuclear reactor, it's an odd feeling. It's a strange feeling. I don't know that I really feared nuclear, but I didn't know enough about it to really have an opinion. But you stand that close to a reactor, certainly gives you a perspective that the fear that's being spread around is probably coming from people in an echo chamber. Then we went into the canal area where they cool the spent fuel and the tests that they run and stand literally feet from the canal of water that's about 25 feet deep. Everything that's cooling is sitting about 20 feet below, so that's all that separates you from those things, is 20 feet of water. So if that doesn't really kind of resonate with how much they know, the safety that they go through, the obvious tried and trust, true tried and tested methods because this thing has been there for 70 years roughly, depending on construction, but this is not something that just happened overnight. It's, and this canal that they use has been in use from the very beginning, and the water that's in there is just simply water. It's very purified water, but you're standing right there looking at it, so you almost can't possibly get any closer. And so the, the obvious theme was how safe this really is. And then to go see and have explained the process of how they store the spent fuel and see the equipment that they use, get to touch it, and then, as Commissioner West mentioned, tour through a facility that had 200 of these casks with spent fuel that you could again literally touch the casks. It really makes me wish that more people would inform themselves of this. Get out of your echo chamber. Go find out what the reality is, what the truth is, and, and experience what, what is the future, like it or not. I don't know if there's something for Sweetwater County or not. That's yet to be determined, but it is, it is certainly something worth considering. It's something worth having a conversation over, and it's something worth having an informed and educated conversation over again. Get out of your echo chambers. Let's go, let's go deal with what's reality. Sadly, my last comment is God bless Charlie Kirk and his family.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate the report. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Jones?
Solid work, Commissioners. I think Commissioner Tomlin mentioned it, but just a reminder, we've got the 2025 Waco Conference next week, which is the Wyoming Association of County Officers. That was a two-year, I guess, bid that we put in last year, so we hosted it here out at the Events Complex last year. Same goes for this year, Clerk Lane and/or Clerk Swinson, I'm not sure which, which to go by now, but congratulations. And Sally put in a great deal of work to put that off, and we'll have different breakout events for each of the respective county offices, but another opportunity to showcase Sweetwater and put us on the map, so look forward to attending that. And that is going to move us right along into Tab C, which is the action presentation items. First up is a break. We're about 11 minutes, no, nine minutes ahead of schedule, so we will resume back here. Let's shoot for 10:20, and we'll have the 4H extension discussion. Take a quick break. Take a quick break. All right, we'll call this meeting back to order, lift off at Tab C, the action and presentation items portion of the agenda. And we've returned from break, and next up is the 4H volunteer and program update. Joining us today is University Wyoming Extension Office, the 4H Extension Educator Natasha Holtmeyer. Good morning Natasha.
Good morning Commissioners. This is a, I feel like this is gonna be fun part, I guess. Okay, I have a speech, because I can't stay on topic. Good afternoon Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. For those I haven't yet had the pleasure of meeting, my name is Natasha Holtmeyer and I serve as a 4H Youth Development educator, Extension Educator here in Sweetwater County. Today, I just, I want to go over some of our accomplishments, like as 4H, and not just the youth accomplishments, but also the volunteer accomplishments and their impact, the contributions of our volunteers, the impact, their impact during this year's county fair and how we're building on that to ensure that every young person in our community is not just ready for life, but beyond ready for their future, as well as sharing a few of the contributions of the youth, because that's what I know you guys like to hear. At the heart of 4H's people, neighbors, alumni, parents and friends who give generously of their time and talent so our youth can grow. Without volunteers, 4H simply could not exist. This year, I conducted a survey of our 4H fair volunteers, and while the numbers of the survey, like I think we had eight, we had fourteen people, there's a couple surveys I sent out, fourteen people respond, this kind of gives you an average of how much time these volunteers put in. On average, a single volunteer gave about thirty-seven hours just during fair week. Before fair even began, volunteers invested another a hundred and forty-seven hours each in planning, preparation and setup. One of our super awesome volunteers contributed over five hundred hours of volunteerism. Many rearranged work schedules, taking on average two days off from their jobs to ensure our kids had the best possible experience. Other folks took an entire week off work to be at the barns helping the youth, sometimes from six AM to ten or eleven PM. Families personally invested as well, often purchasing fair bands for themselves and members of their family to support these youth, and they spend anywhere from a hundred dollars to over five hundred dollars each out of pocket on meal supplies, travel, to make fair success. That's not what they contribute to, like just their family, that is what they contribute just for fair, right? And while the numbers tell one story, the words of our volunteers say even more. One wrote, "The most important rewarding part was simply seeing the kids happy." Another said it was working with the members and their families. However, the most impactful was working with kids, creating future local leaders, responsible adults and watching them succeed. As an educator, my role is not only to teach youth, but also to equip adults with the knowledge, resources and confidence they need to provide these top notch programs. When our volunteers feel prepared and supported, they can focus on creating an environment where every child feels a strong sense of belonging, that they matter, they're valued and have a place in 4H. So on to our youth. Of course, the true impact of 4H is seen at the, in the accomplishments of our youth this year, the Sweetwater County 4H member shined at both the county fair and the state fair. Our county sent over a hundred and twenty static exhibits and eighteen youth participants to state fair. These young people not only showcased their projects, but also had the chance to experience new challenges, connect with their peers from across the state and gain skills that extend far beyond the fairgrounds. That's what beyond ready looks like in action. Every one of our youth who attended the champion of champions, so that's like if they won their class in market animal, they went and competed with the other top of their class in, with other counties, all of our kids placed top ten, and that's pretty cool. We had representatives in all, all species. And one of our members took home the title of overall steer champion. In fashion and fabric, one of our members earned second place at state fair, Taylor, and she was awarded a five hundred dollar scholarship to attend a national 4H event. Another youth proudly represented Sweetwater County at Raton, in Raton, New Mexico, at their Shooting Sports and Leadership Conference, growing both their technical skills and leadership abilities. Two of our members received premiums for static exhibits and leatherwork and canning, showcasing the creative and practical life skills 4H is known for. We also had a youth compete in place and dog events, showing the diversity of our projects our young people pursue. Beyond these highlights, several others placed in the top of their classes, reinforcing the depth of talent and dedication across our programs. These successes don't happen in a vacuum, they're the direct result of volunteers who mentor, parents, parents who encourage, and a community that invests in youth. Each ribbon, scholarship and award represents countless hours of practice, learning and growth. But my favorite part of fair isn't, isn't the competing, it's not the big events, the day of the show ring. The true spirit of 4H is in the quiet early mornings, around six or seven AM, where most of us, a lot of us are not even up, many of us haven't had our coffee yet, and these kids are in the barn helping each other and supporting their peers. To me, that's the most impactful part of fair, and it's my favorite part, I like to go see. It, it shows the culture of belonging, teamwork and responsibility, and this is where the memories are being made, along with hopefully a few water fights and where the true spirit of 4H shines. So looking ahead, just so you guys kind of are aware of what I'm going to be doing. As we look toward the future, we're hopefully building on this foundation of volunteerism and youth achievement to expand opportunities for young people in Sweetwater County. Nationally, 4H's focus is ensuring that young people are not just ready for what comes after high school, but beyond ready. So equipping them with the skills, confidence, experience they need to thrive in colleges, careers and the community and citizenship. Here in our county, this vision is, is three ways, coming to life in three ways. Leadership development, we're relaunching our junior leaders program, we've already had one meeting, and I think it's really cool because as a kid, my favorite part of 4H was the having fun part, and their like focus was they want to help out. and their like focus was they want to help out. And that's really cool to see that they just want to create these cool things. Hands-on learning, we're planning new workshops and clinics covering livestock, STEM, creative arts and life skills. So, every child can grow and discover their unique talents. So, we'll be having some workshops on those things. And then we have a, a set of volunteer, volunteer workshops as well to train our, our adults so that they feel ready to teach these kids. So, we'll continue to train, mentor and empower them so that we can reduce barriers like time, expenses and facilities and strengthen the sense of belonging that keeps families involved year after year. So Commissioners, this, none of this is possible without your support. Your investment in extension and 4H helps us provide the resources, training and structure that allows volunteers to focus on what matters most, mentoring kids. To our volunteers, thank you. You're the backbone of the program and the reason our youth are growing into leaders who will shape the future of Sweetwater County. To our youth, we're proud of you. Your hard work achievements and resilience show us that the future of Sweetwater County is in good hands. These numbers show the sacrifice, the smile on the kids' faces and the recognition they've earned show the reward. With dedicated volunteers, community support and intentional education for both youth and adults, I believe the 4H future, 4H in Sweetwater County is brighter than ever. Thank you for your time today and for your continued partnership in making sure our youth are not just ready, but beyond ready for the future.
Very good, congratulations. It sounds like you didn't just dip a toe in, you went headfirst and right into fair and it sounds like you had a successful fair at that. I know I was obviously out there and I attended the auction and will be working overtime to cover that experience I had there. But no, job well done. It sounds like things are going well and certainly it takes a team and a team of volunteers and
Yes.
That's, that's good. Glad to hear the success of all that.
Lots of learning, but we're getting there and it's gonna be awesome. Thank you.
Very good. Questions, comments Commissioners? And thanks for coming over this morning. Keep up the good work.
Thanks for your enthusiasm, in spite of the obstacles.
Next, that's going to take us to item number three under tab C, the award of the fiscal year 2026 Crack Sealant Project. Joining us this morning is Director of Public Works Gene Legursky. Good morning Gene.
Good morning Chairman West. Commissioners, what you have before you is the bid results and the award, if you so choose, of the 2026 Crack Seal Project. Just so you guys know, this is all pretty much out north of Rock Springs and roads that we paved in the last three to five years that are showing a little bit of crack and wear. And what this does is preserve the pavement and allow it to last a little bit longer. We were lucky enough to receive three bidders. Bids were all very close and I would like to award the bid to R&amp;D Sweeping, sorry, got my pages messed up, in an amount of eighty-two thousand eight oh five forty.
Thanks Gene, yeah, some tight bidding there and under budget, so that's a win. Questions on the crack seal bid award Commissioners? If not, an entertaining motion to award the fiscal year 2026 Crack Sealant Project to R&amp;D Sweeping and Asphalt Maintenance LC on the sum of eighty-two thousand eight hundred and five dollars and forty cents and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary project documents. Motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion?
How many miles, do you know?
Five point two, I believe. We're doing three miles on Yellowstone north of that and then every other. No, it's a little more than that because last year was a mile itself, so six something.
Any other questions? No, we do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries unanimously. It's gonna move us right along to item number four. We've got a memorandum of understanding with Cyril Brothers Construction Company regarding County Road Eighteen and County Road Fifteen and we'll hand it back to Gene.
What this is, is County Road Fifteen and Eighteen are actually behind the power plant and they go into what's known as a black wrought steamboat area or you can swing back around and it's the pier or cutoff. This road actually goes to the Cyril Brothers Lucite Pit. The last four or five years, we've mag chloride this road, tried to do it when they're hauling out eventually and, and, and just keep that when the underground mine was going on and everything like that. This last year, we did not mag that because we felt other roads were more important. Cyril Brothers called us up and said, "Hey, we got a big haul project coming out of there. Can we help you guys out? We will grade the road and apply the mag chloride at no cost to the county for that." And he goes, "It's part of our project, so if you would allow us to do that, we'd be grateful." So, we got an MOU together, they signed it and we're presenting it in front of you because it is the Sweetwater County's asset. So, we want everybody to make sure everybody knew what was going on out there.
Very good. Excellent community partner. Questions or comments on the MOU Commissioners? Not an entertaining motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Sweetwater County and Cyril Brothers Construction Company regarding County Road Eighteen and County Road Fifteen and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Toman, any discussion? It's very enthused, second, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks Gene. It's gonna move us right along to item number five under tab C, which is the Cisco Network Switches and Bid Award. Joining us this morning is County IT Director Tim Knight, as well as Purchasing Director Marty Dernovich. And good morning to both of you.
Good morning Commission. So, in your packet, we provided the bid opening tab. We sent it out to six different vendors. Two responded, A&amp;M being the low bid at eighty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-six thirty-nine and Tech thirty-six, or three sixty-five at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety fifty. And of course, they didn't provide a bond, so they would not been eligible to begin with anyways, but we do add them on. So, we're here today to ask the board to approve the bid for the network switches to A&amp;M in the amount of eighty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-one thirty-nine.
Very good, thank you Marty. Questions on the network switch award Commissioners?
I have a question.
Commissioner Toman.
Cisco, why does it say Cisco? Is that the name of the product or?
Yeah, that's the brand of the switches that we use.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Marty, can you clarify the total on here? Because what I'm seeing on the bid opening is just a little bit different.
Eighty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-six thirty-nine?
Eighty-six, seven, seventy, yeah, I didn't think that's what you said just a second ago. Perfect, thank you.
I thought, oh, I might have read it wrong. I thought I better check.
Any other questions? Not an entertaining motion to award the Cisco Network Switches to A&amp;M Company in the amount of eighty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-nine cents and authorize the chairman to sign any necessary documents.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Moving right along to item number six, we've got the Rotary mower bid award and we'll hand it back to Marty.
Again Commissioners, this is for our Road and Bridge Department. I sent it out to five different vendors requesting the bid specs. We received one bid back to book, or excuse me, Black Cliff Equipment out of Utah in the amount of thirty-six thousand sixty dollars and we're asking the board to award.
Very good, thank you Marty. Any questions on the Rotary mower bid Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Slaughter.
Marty, just one question. I didn't see in the documentation what the estimated cost was.
I think, I believe it was thirty, or forty thousand estimated.
It come under also.
Oh, yeah. Both of these bids did come under budget, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions? If not, an entertaining motion to approve the Sweetwater County Rotary mower bid to Black Cliff Equipment Company in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars and, thirty-six thousand and sixty dollars and authorize the chairman to sign any necessary documentation.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks Marty, thanks Tim, appreciate it. Gene? It's gonna move us to item number seven, which is the Predatory Animal Board Appointment. We've had a vacancy on there and since have had a couple of applications and I believe Commissioner Toman is gonna help us out with this one.
Yes, we had two applicants, Dave Jarrell, who works at Simplot and Jace Jackman of Jackman Construction. Jake answered the question, yes, he does own livestock and you cannot own livestock to be an appointee from the county. So, based on that, I would recommend that Dave Jarrell be appointed to the Predatory Animal Board.
Very good, thanks Commissioner. We do have a motion to appoint Dave Jarrell to fill the unexpired term through July first, two thousand and twenty-seven on the Predatory Animal Board by Commissioner Toman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion on the appointment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toman.
I would just recommend that you, you ask the question on that application, do they have a Wyoming game and fish license, hunting, fishing or something? Because that's a requirement for three out of the four.
We can get that added, no problem. Certainly thanks to both of those gentlemen for stepping up. That's been kind of a difficult one to fill. Next item under tab C is item number eight. We've got a Board of Health Appointment and I would hand it over to the Liaisonal Board of Health and Commissioner Jones.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. This position has been open since July first. The reason is the position must be a doctor of medicine that, or I mean a doctor of dental surgery, excuse me. And we didn't have anybody until now. And so now Dr. Devin Tanner has put his name in, so I would move to appoint Dr. Devin Tanner to the Board of Health for a four-year term through seven, one of twenty-nine.
Very good. We do have a motion to appoint Dr. Devin Tanner to the District Board of Health by Commissioner Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter, any discussion on the appointment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion is unanimous. Thanks to Dr. Tanner for stepping up. Lastly is item number nine, which was what we amended the agenda for this morning in regards to the fire restrictions. And we've got Alan joining us just at the right time. Good morning sir.
Good morning Chairman, Commissioners. In regards to the fire restrictions, is my recommendation to remove the fire restrictions at this time. Carbon County will remove theirs starting tomorrow. You went to county is, fire personnel are in favor of removing it and they have their commissioner meeting this afternoon, so I'm not sure how that's gonna go. Spoke with the BLM supervisor and he is in favor. If, if we, if the county removes it, then the BLM will remove theirs also for Sweetwater County. Due to the fires in Lincoln County and Sublet County, they are going to remain under fire restrictions at this time. But like I said, the BLM is in favor. If we would like to remove fireworks, they will too.
Thanks Alan, discussion on that Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I think I support that, that position. I think, I think we did our job with it over the last month and, and fuel moisture levels are increasing and we're having cooler mornings and, and getting some dew on the ground and I think our, our fire danger has, has passed. So, I would just recommend no action here and letting it expire tomorrow as the current resolution is, is in place.
Second? Are you ready?
No, there's no motion. I think we'll just take no action. We've got it implemented through tomorrow, so I believe the notion, the notion, not the motion from Commissioner Richards was just to let it expire without extending it. Everyone else good with that? Okay, well, thanks Alan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Also, I'd like to just give you an update. I got an email from Scott Kitchener from Fire District One yesterday. So, the seasonals are done for the year and he just wanted to pass on that they had a really good year. Sweetwater County burned approximately, we burned, had about six hundred and fifty acres burned. The largest one was four hundred acres, but all of them were taken care of and everything is good.
Good. Glad to hear it.
Yes.
We'll hope for a little more moisture out there, just not the white stuff yet.
Correct.
Yet.
At all. Come on, snow.
All right, thanks Alan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And that's gonna conclude the regular business before us today Commissioners. We do have a request to enter into executive session to discuss a couple legal matters. It is anticipated that we'll be taking action upon coming out. So, at this time, you're going to enter and we'll take that up in the Calsar Rock Room across the hallway. And with that, an entertaining motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of potential litigation.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay? We're now an executive.
Entertained motion to come out of executive session and reconvene the meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and we are now out of executive. After coming out of executive session, we do need to take action this morning. And with that commissioners, I'd entertain a motion to approve and allow the chairman and council to accept service as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries unanimously. With no further business to come before us, this meeting stands adjourned.